Testing, one, two, three, testing.
Been waiting for, and, uh, there are many things I might say about this journal, but it would take too long, so, uh, I will just say to you, Dr. Dowd is one of these people who dares to dream, and, um, not daydreams either, but, uh, I spoke to him about a week ago, and he expressed an idea to me that I thought would be very interesting to the nurses in Atlanta. And I, um, got to talking it around with the special ad hoc committee, and we thought that, uh, it would be, that you would be interested in hearing what Dr. Dowd has to say. We have represented here, Dr. Dowd, the licensed undergraduate nurses, the licensed practical nurses, the registered nurses, plus, um, well, she's out of the room right now, but our state president is also here, and without further ado, Dr. Bill Dowd, who is president-elect of the Fulton County Medical Society, and he is going to present this idea to you. Dr. Dowd, this is our state president.
Hello, sir, ma'am. How are you? Nice to see you.
Glad to have you here.
Um, I'd like to discuss this with you all, so I'm gonna sit down. Whenever you stand up on people and you're over six feet tall, it gets a little bit overpowering, and so, I think you can hear me without me standing up. Well, one thing, as you know, that, um, has been very difficult over the last twenty or thirty years, to learn to do, doctors to learn to work with other people, and I think that actually that, um, everyone has recognized this, that, uh, when you get to the point where you're, um, sort of playing your duty with people's lives anywhere from twenty to fifty times a day, getting used to bossing people around, and in the office that actually, that our offices are sort of set up as benevolent dictatorships, because it actually all has to rotate around you as an individual, because of the final decision, what to do with patients' works this way, and unfortunately, in our dealings with, with the nurses and the hospitals and in the community in general, that our behavior has been reflected in our work in the office, and it has made it very difficult for other people to work with us. I start all this off as a preamble, because I would hate for you all to get the general idea that the doctors basically are trying to intrude themselves into a field that you all have the prime responsibility for, and take it over, because this certainly would be the furthest thing that, uh, from our minds. We have been concerned about several things in the city of Atlanta from the standpoint of you all, there are things that affect the nurses. One is that we have not basically been convinced to begin with that the educational institutions here in the city have been doing a good job in keeping up with postgraduate nursing training. Now, this may come as somewhat of a surprise to you, but, uh, actually, the whole concept, at least to me, of practicing medicine has changed since I started here in the early nineteen fifties. At that time, medicine was still a one-man show. Actually, we now are part of a medical team, and every team, of course, has to have a quarterback or a captain, somebody calling the signals, but still, that, um, I think football is always a good example, and actually, the quarterback cannot go anywhere without a good supporting team, and that every member on the team is very essential. Like anybody who's ever tried to play a ten-man football against eleven-man team will know exactly what you mean. If a member of your team drops out or is inadequate, or simply doesn't measure up to par, that it hampers the, uh, the care of whatever you're trying to do for this team effort, and this particular case is take care of people. And we have been concerned that actually, that Emory and other education institutions have not actually put on good postgraduate courses that are comparable to what we're getting, and we only began to get those actually after Willis came to Emory and took over the professorship of medicine only about ten years ago, because before then, the medical education was not going to need to carry any single speaker calls on an isolated topic and none of this was ever put together. We have been interested somewhat in, in, in nursing education, because you all are really at both arms of a team, really, uh, it's impossible to run even an efficient office anymore without a good nurse if you do any sort of practice at all. So we have intruded ourselves into this somewhat, uh, simply because of the fact that we felt that, uh, that here was a, a field in which pressure from the medical profession might, uh, get the educational institutions all involved to give the sort of courses that you all wanted to have all along, uh, and I hope that, uh, we'll be able to continue to bear pressure on them, not for the type courses, because we're not, uh, in the educational business and can't really do this, but it continues to put pressure on them to try to come up with good postgraduate nursing training courses that are comparable to what we have been able to get in medicine. Uh, the second part that we have been interested in that affects you all this business of the nurses registry, uh, this has become a tremendous problem in the city of Atlanta, that there are many nurses who are competent, who are not viewed, simply because the communication channels are poor and people don't get to them the time they do. The hospitals have tried to compensate for this, uh, to a great extent by forming their own registers, and it's always interesting what happens in hospitals, uh, I've worked in and out, you know, twenty-five years, and the hospitals basically are run on, uh, the same thing that political systems are run on, is that, uh, people play favorites, and that, uh, a hospital nursing register can get to be a very difficult thing, because some of the nurses, uh, get all the hard cases and some get all the easy, and this gets to be very difficult, and, and so the whole problem of coming up with some good nursing registry, uh, has, has concerned us. We have not known exactly what to do with it, very frankly, essentially, because it, um, there is still a lot of conflict in you all's own ranks, I know, about what, uh, what needs to be done in this particular field. Uh, about two years ago, however, an idea came to mind that might be of some help in formulating the thinking of the group to go on, and I think actually that any activity I've just told them, the idea is going to have to come from you all, that's my answering service.
There's a phone over here.
No, I don't need to go right this minute, but, uh...
Can't get away from him.
My partner is taking my calls, and they probably put this on by mistake. Anyway, about two years ago, we began to get the idea that, that doctors in town were also having the same problems, and this came very forcefully to mind one weekend when I got a call back in, I think it was November of nineteen sixty-six, from a patient on a Sunday night, and the patient said, gee, Doc, I certainly appreciate your calling, but actually, I called Dr. Hanky on Thursday night, and this was on Sunday, and it had taken the, uh, the registry that we deal with three days to get this call to us. And we have been in the process since that time of actually trying to negotiate buying out the larger doctors' answering services that are available here in town, and we're still in the process of doing this, raising the money, and, uh, as you know, as I mentioned before, doctors are difficult people to deal with anyway, and, uh, getting all of this put together in one little neat package has been real difficult, but we still hope that for this year is out to have bought out the larger doctor registers in town, and so at least we will be running our own answering service. When I was chatting with you about this a couple of weeks ago, it, it came to my mind that possibly, not in any effort to control, but in an effort primarily for us to, uh, provide a better service, there might be some way that the doctors and nurses and any other medically affiliated groups might utilize a central answering service that would make not only the, uh, handling of these calls more efficient, but also might make them cheaper, because it is a considerable expense. Right now, it costs us about five hundred dollars a year per person to be registered and have a paging system I can carry around in my pocket. Well, this is no small expense, and if we could cut it down by a third or a half, we'd be real happy, and the larger number of people that are involved in an answering service, the better off you are. Emory and Grady have expressed some interest as far as hospitals are concerned in having a paging service that would work in the hospital and outside in case of a disaster, and so it would aid in disaster planning, and so we're working actively with them to try to put all of this little bundle together and get all of the various prejudices that people have and, uh, and the distress that they have, uh, quadded down, so we can work together as a team, and I primarily came to you all, let you know that we are doing this, and that we would be very interested in trying to cooperate on any sort of basis that would seem to be fair and, and non-controlling with the nursing group, and try to come up with a cheaper and more efficient answering service, and I do think if we work together, we might be able to do this. This is sort of it in a nutshell, and I'll be glad to try to answer the questions about this some along.
I, I think it would be well, maybe, Ms. Armstrong, if, uh, I indicated to the group and Dr. Dowd how the association, I mean, our position on this, we have felt from A&amp;A standpoint and a state association standpoint, that we should not be in this business, it's a commercial, really, business, it's a community service, and it is felt that much of any organization's time is utilized on problems associated with this that might better be used, in what you were indicating earlier, educational programs, which we spent with part of yesterday discussing for this association and planning, uh, programs for our nurses. The, so, from a state association standpoint, we're not in opposition, and I'm talking as organized nursing, we are not in opposition to setting up a registry that will please the private duty nurses and that it, and I'm talking about all kinds of private duty nurses, because we have LPN representation and the licensed undergraduate. The one thing that we do say, that is, if such a service carried, carries the name of our association, then if this is under, for instance, the Greater Metropolitan Atlanta area, Fifth District then would have to assume responsibility for the screening of applicants for the usage of this service if they were bearing our name. Now, it is the feeling of A&amp;A and GSMA that if there could be an arrangement whereby there could be an advisory committee or a committee that would set standards for personnel usage of such a service, that this would then become the prerogative of the Fifth District Nurses Association. Now, it may be that Fifth District doesn't want to be involved, because I can't speak for them, but if this is, in essence, sponsored by Fifth District or the State Nurses Association and carries its name as a contributing organization with the medical association, then there would have to be some arrangement whereby the applicant's qualifications from a professional standpoint would have to be screened, and I'm sure you must do this for your medical profession, they have to be reputable doctors to use your service, is that not true? Well, this is what we would be asking for, and beyond that, from a state association standpoint, we would not be involved, it would be your baby.
I don't think physicians would be in a position, of course, to do any screening on this, just like I think you all probably would not, we, uh, we would probably screen our own doctors and hope that the associations that came into this would do their own screening to a certain extent, it almost has to be this way in order to work at all.
This is what I was thinking.
I was going to ask you a question. Do you see this as a unit, that is, um, where it operates as a, a business arm, so to speak, of, what, the Fulton County Medical Society, or will it be really set up as a business separate from, I was wondering, just, you know, framework-wise?
Tell me what the real structure of it would be.
Yeah.
I would hope really, and that what we'd end up with, uh, I'm, I'm sure we all will work closer together, I'm sure you're aware of the developments that are occurring now in the field of doctors' assistance, and, uh, that we're gonna get closer and closer together, the obvious place to turn to in training people to do things that we are now doing as the computer age hits us, it's really to the, the group of nurses anyway, who already have at least a clinical experience and the educational background to work into this. Uh, we're gonna work closer together in the future than we have, I'm sure, and I'm sure there gonna be jobs developed out of this that none of us have even dreamed of ever doing right at the present time.
I get panicked. I panic sometimes when I think...
And consequently, I would hope that the sort of structure would end up with be some sort of nonprofit foundation with the board of trustees...
This is what I was wondering.
That would be representative of the various medical groups, and I, you know, it's sort of stupid to have dentists, and they don't really feel this way, but I honestly think it's ridiculous to have a separate dental school, I think it's a tremendous waste of money that we're putting up at Emory right now for a separate dental school, and you're teaching the same thing that these people do over in the medical school, and, uh, I think that they're gonna come closer and closer. Now, whether we change our names, uh, I sort of doubt, but whether, we're certainly gonna change our relative relationships to each other.
I would just, from a standpoint of...
Pharmacy as well, yeah.
Really, uh, the business, the operation of a central service, whatever it happened to be called, would this be under, and it seems to me, just, my thinking would be that a setup as a separate business agency, its own, would probably be the most appropriate. Now, I think you do get into the thing that you would have to have some sort of standard-setting groups or policy-setting groups.
Yeah, for instance, uh...
But this would be constant.
If you have, uh, and I'm sure that MAG is no more eager to run a business than our association is, or your association, but if this is set up as nonprofit and so on, um, then, almost out of necessity, uh, we should prevent such an operation from just taking anybody off the street, therefore, it throws it back, really, to the professional associations to clear their people for this, and this would have to be set up...
For standard-setting.
For standard-setting, not, nothing to do with the business...
But the mechanics side would be handled.
This is what A&amp;A is proposing right now.
Legally, this is almost an asset, because, for example, if we set up, which we're getting ready to do next year, a list of specialties for doctors in the telephone book, that the only thing the Fulton County Medical Society can do is to hire the amount of telephone pages that we want, and we can put it in Fulton County Medical Society specialty listing, but the people we want to screen, if we permit the phone company to put in, without charge, a listing of medical specialists, any Joe Blow in the world can come in and sue you and say, I, no, or say, I will enroll in this, and if you don't enroll, they sue you.
That's right.
And so it has to involve professional associations if you're gonna do a sort of screening at all, yeah.
And with eight members in our group, we, we screen them, but we have to have four recommendations come in to us, two of them doctors and one from our end they're working under and from a hospital, and that'd be something on the same order.
Whatever you set up as your criteria, you see, in other words, as I would see it, the associations would set the criteria, and if you had this arrangement with this nonprofit, and then they would be bound, it would really be a contract, I suppose, they'd be bound to follow those criteria for anybody to get on that registry.
Well, I think that was the basic thing that a lot of the girls were concerned about, about community registry, was that they felt that they wanted to be under some sort of professional association, and that...
This was your concern, was it?
And that was, that, that was the main thing that every one that, that I talked with about the possibility of a community registry, was that it...
It's like anyone, it's like...
That we had to have professional standards and be professionally associated somewhat with...
It's the only way you could legally enforce it, and it has to be done this way, or else this would have to be a subcontract by a professional association with a, with a foundation of some kind, there'd be a legal mechanism for working it out, because otherwise you would get yourself sued and sitting, and there's just no point getting involved with this, this sort of thing.
I imagine the person that would take care of the business then would really like for the, each, uh, professional group to screen their own.
I'm, I'm sure there is.
This is a, this is a trend, Dr. Dowd, in some of our large cities where the association has almost depleted its treasurer, treasury, and has all, not been able to do educational functions, all the money's gone for registries. They've turned this over in some instances to commercial, but with a contractual agreement that the only people who went on that registry were those screened by the profession.
Of course, you need subcontract.
And it's worked very well, very well.
I would, I would hope, basically, that with a sufficient volume, actually, the cities that I've looked at, which have been three, San Francisco and Chicago and Washington, New York, one of the real problems, they have a multiplicity of answering services, and that, uh, they're draining off a lot of their profits by reduplication, reduplicating administrative structures, and you put it all together under one head, you could give a better service, cheaper, and of course, the obvious thing, that you're gonna have to end up with, if you look down the pipe about five years and we go a little more, is we're gonna have to do the same thing with our answering service that they are doing with Delta Airlines, and you know, you save Flight eight four nine, uh, tourist class, and it comes back, this thing pipes back at you immediately, that you've got four people on, I mean, four spots open for tourist class on Flight eight four nine, but you've got two, three thousand people lined up in a registry, and there's no way in the world one individual would keep up with that computerized...
That's right. I agree.
With a computer, it's simple.
I agree.
Uh, but computers are also expensive unless the volume is there.
And this, these registries at the hospitals have been operating during this crisis, I understand that they could be challenged, am I correct, Annie Lou? They could be challenged by the tax people, this has been, question has been raised, so they're gonna get rid, I know of their registers fast, and this means there's going to be a void here in the Atlanta area if we don't have something to pick it up.
You were talking about the doctor's answering service, um, we have started now to go on a register with the doctor's answering service, uh, with a lady who's running it, and she has over three hundred doctors on her answering service, and she's put in a phone now for us, and Miss Weimer has been asked to work on that committee and so forth, and she said she would like to admit with us in this, because we're getting, we've got over the amount of names right now to go on that, and, uh...
Which doctor's answering service is it?
Mrs. Young.
She has more equipment than any other answering service this side of Baltimore, I think, and this side of, uh, uh, New Orleans.
What's the name of her service? I'm just not familiar with it.
Buckhead Answering Service.
It's Buckhead Answering Service, but she has different numbers for each, like the doctors has a certain number, and it isn't advertised, and she has a number in the book already for the LPNs and LUns, she just hasn't started operating.
She does have a big operation out there.
She has the most, uh, she, she has all the equipment, she has all of it ready to go.
I think she has eleven boards.
And all of her employees and everything already on that, everything, so she said she would not have to rehire anyone at all, because she has the employees already ready because of handling all these doctors, and I believe she told us at our last meeting that she was taking on some more, didn't she?
I don't know, I don't...
She's done a pretty good job out in her area, and I'm sure that she's gathering steam, and that, uh, that actually, that her, of course, that a lot of doctors basically are going to screen the calls, uh, with a service like this, you know, eating some of this sort of thing.
Well, she, uh, since she has all the equipment, and as Miss Mona says, she, uh, we have been told, because we investigated when we started in what work it talked about, going with her, she does have the, uh, everything, she has the, all the equipment, and she has her twenty, you know, twenty-four hour ride around, and she told us, how many, how many boards were there?
I think it's eleven boards, I'm not sure, I've been up there, but I, I think...
Well, may I ask this, uh, doctors, I can understand, they know who's a medical doctor and who's specialist and all this and so forth, but how do they screen nurses? How do they know who's a nurse, it can do what, and so forth and so on?
Well, she would, they had, uh...
They don't know them.
Margaret, uh, um, what's her name?
She wasn't going to take anyone that, unless they were screened from their own association.
They had to be screened through their own association, just like I just told him, we screen, we have to have, uh, when we take a member into our association, we have to have four recommendations from them.
Well, I mean, I understand this, we had a register here for years, Fifth District Private Duty, and I've done private duty here for twenty-five years, and, uh, we had nurses running the registry, and they knew the nurses, where they were, how old they were, about what kind of nursing they can do, and this is what we have to have in order to place the nurses where they can take care of the patients, let's face it, we've got younger nurses and older nurses, and somebody can't do what I can do, and someday I won't be able to do what some girl twenty-five can do.
Miss Ford had talked to Miss Young about that, she had told her, had talked to her about it, the one who had the cab.
So it's got to be somebody, I think, professional that knows the nurses in order to put them in the right place to nurse the right patient.
And, uh, that, that has already been discussed in our meetings and everything, exactly, because the age...
How's she gonna know this, though?
Well, it all has to go on, on their application.
They have all of it. They put down what they can nurse, what kind of patients...
Yes, ma'am.
And what cases they prefer, and what hours they prefer.
She's got the, she's got all the colors of cards, your first is seven to three, three to eleven, eleven to seven, and all that, and then your extras, some of the girls that retired will not be working all the time, or their age are down there.
Some of them are working a few days.
That's right, and, see, she's gotta go and have a card for that, and, uh, all that, uh, your age is on there, what cases you prefer, what you will do, what hospital, and, uh, so many of them, put down the cab just their preference, and then Piedmont was their second, well, she has talked to Piedmont and also to the cab about, uh, picking them, and, uh, so, we, we have the list of names, but we only, there's so many I'm on long-term cases right now that have us signed up to go on that registry, but she, we've got over a hundred and fifty.
I imagine she's got more than that, she's...
I think, well, that's the last time I talked to her.
What kind of registry do you think would work best, Dr. Dowd, for private duty nurses and this and the fourth?
Well, I think what we've talked, talked about today is really a sort of an idea of arrangement to, to screen it, and you say, certainly gonna be some professional help in looking these applications over that come in, I think an application per se is not gonna be good enough either.
No, you see, we have a, within our organization, within Fifth District too, they have a registry committee, and there's no reason why all these applications could not be reviewed by the registry committee and, uh, recommended or not recommended to the registry, you see, just as they're doing now, you'd still have your private duty registry...
But wasn't it handling that matter before, when it was up there in the grade?
And this is the way we've done it all these years, that's why I said, and it folded, I don't know what happened.
Well, it folded because...
Well, it folded because financially, fifth district wasn't large enough. That's what Dr. Dowdy's saying, that if we could get doctors and nurses in these kinds of groups, then your administrative costs are not too great. Our administrative costs were too great for the numbers we had.
Well, I understand what happened to our registry is that so many of the hospitals started their own and I, I mean, I- Until we didn't have enough to belong to it. Years we did and the hospitals, usually in each individual hospital started their own registry because they were unhappy, I suppose.
But you see, I think the hospitals have learned the hard way that they can't finance it and we can't do it.
Unless, find out what's wrong with it, unless fix it, because this is what we needed to start with.
Listen, this is like Bud Banks in nursing school, for example, like another possible example.
You learn by trial there or-
That ran financial straits because of their diffusion.
We should have met with the doctors and find out and the hospital's administrators, directors of nursing, find out what was wrong with it and done something about it.
We didn't do that.
Now, this, excuse me, there's one thing I wanna, wanna, uh, ask you if I can follow my own trend of thought on this. Uh, when we, when Emory set up its, uh, its own private duty, uh, registry, we were told that we would not have to belong to the professional organizations, that we were encouraged to belong, but we would not be required to belong. That they could not say to an individual nurse, you cannot be on this registry if, if you don't, uh, if you don't belong to the professional organizations. That had something to do with the right to work.
That's what started it, making it go downhill too.
Is that, is that, what it, I mean, was that what was behind this?
This is correct. That's what started it going down.
So my idea then is that if we have, if we, uh, say, went in with this, uh, answering service and we had our fifth district, um, uh, but, you know, if fifth district was our sponsoring agency on it. But suppose some RN came in and, uh, she didn't want to belong to the, uh, to the agencies and, and all then, then what will prevent her from saying, you are denying me the right to work?
No. You see, she, this, well, let's go back and I think Dr. Dowdy, if you don't support me in this, but I believe this is true. You see, there's a lot of difference between a public agency, employing agency denying the right to work than it is for in a professional organization to sponsor something and develop criteria and control the employee. This is quite different than a hospital closing its doors because you do not belong to an organization. Because the organization is purely voluntary. You can belong, if you want to participate in such a, uh, answering service, one of the criterias is you belong to the organization. The hospitals can't set that. No employing agency can set that. Am I correct, Dr. Dowdy?
Result to in that right, the hospitals cannot really make a point.
That's right. But it is correct, but a voluntary organization can set this if they are sponsoring it.
That's right.
Well, that's-
But the doctors don't practice here without belonging to their organization and that's what's happened to the nursing organization all along. They have not backed the, they haven't backed each other.
I wouldn't say that because we're getting backing today. We've never had.
Yeah, we've told them that's right. But happens to our registry though. The hospitals took over and the nurses would not belong to it.
Well, there, there are other problems. You know, there were other problems.
I mean, there was a problem, but we could have solved them.
The point of education that he just brought out, that is one of the main things.
That's right.
We have in-service programs on the latest things that are up to date and I think that we should be required to go through.
I don't think you really require people.
Well, I mean, you ask them if they want to.
Well, we, uh, we provide it, they'll get there.
If you provide it, I think the majority of them will get there. I think the cases that they assign to the privileges, like your hospital privileges. You really don't have to go. A lot of what you can do in a hospital is depending upon your ability and the way you keep up.
That's right. The location department that, that, um-
The tissue committee can sort of gradually restrict you to the point where you can't do anything in the hospital if you don't keep up. And I think the same is true with the nursing situation.
Dr. Dowdy, we, you know, we've had a great deal of, um, I would say, uh, we've carried all the graduate courses we could carry under grants of money, but our weakness has been that we have not, in this association up to this year, had enough money to provide real educational programs for the mass of private duty and general duty nurses. Now, this is in our planning and this we will do throughout the state of Georgia.
I ain't gonna get money for it on appearance.
Well, uh, the association handed up X dollars and I, I'm not gonna tell you the man I know, but, um, we have, we have a philanthropist, Karen Hill, and as soon as we put, uh, our, um, courses and our programs in his hands, he will get the money to match it. And so we are getting, uh, support from this man who is very interested in nursing education. So we are very hopeful this year, we've got three, four, five planned right now, did we yesterday? Five are definitely planned and hopefully we'll double that before the end of the year. And these will not all be in Atlanta. We, hopefully they'll be Atlanta, Macon, Savannah, you know, and Columbus, Augusta. We'll scatter them around the state. Now, this will be in addition to the emphasis that the districts are placing on programming and which our state association will help, were asked, to find resource people and facilities and so on. So for the first time in our history, our association is moving into what I hope will be mass education. At least the opportunity will be afforded and I believe in our nurses. I believe they'll take advantage of it.
I'm sure they will. And I think the sermon thing has been the case.
So far we've had good assignments in the location department anytime they set up a program.
You guys, you all got so much money and go pay your own education.
But we have good ones too. The only money, Dr. Dowdy, we've been able to get for the RN and Emory has used its maximum amount. Georgia's been favored in this and medical college, I've had all kinds of grants. But this is only for nurses who are in, uh, like head nursing supervision. We've not had monies for the general duty and the private duty. So we felt the association had to sponsor this.
American Heart Association has sponsored the days of cardiology.
Well, we co-sponsor, see, we co-sponsor with the Heart Association. And also the league is putting on a great many of these with federal funds, but it has not been for the general staff nurse and the private duty. And I feel personally that we've not met our obligations. I think you're right to say this about us. But we're doing it this year and we're gonna do more.
And we're the ones taking care of the patients. We're the one that needs to know it.
Well, money is a tremendous limiting factor.
That's true. Money there.
Everything that we try to do has been so limited by money and that we-
Now, I have given on legal aspects. I've given courses and invited the private duty and general duty. But the, this was under medical college office that we put a minimum fee. It wasn't much. And we had a lot of private and general duty nurses attend. But it, this association's responsibility for education and we've got to get into it and that's my, that's one of my major platforms. We've got to provide this for our members.
Well, we all were close together. I'll let you all talk about this. I didn't want to use your phone to find out what this crazy call was about. But, uh, if you all really are interested in this, uh, after I leave, you can discuss it.
Now, how soon again did you say, Dr. Dowdy, this might be jailed?
Well, I hope that our part of the answering service, the actual purchase and putting one into operation by us will be available within the year. And that, uh, at any time, I'd say this is a matter of a cooperative effort and that simply utilizing a facility a little more efficiently is all. Say whether, whether we all like it or not, I'm sure that the, uh, the deluge of patients because of the tremendous increase in our population and pillage only slightly slows down.
Well, of course, I'm-
Is, is going to necessitate that we do a lot of new things in those over the next twenty or thirty years.
And I'm very adverse to nurses, uh, look at the amount of time the hospital has to put into trying to get private duty nurses that might better be used in other ways for patients. This is for the birds as far as I'm concerned. I've been a director of nurses.
I appreciate your lobby. Come by and check with you.
Thank you.
Very much.
I'll see you then, Doctor.
Fine. Back with us. Oh, thank you, ma'am.
Hey, Smith told me I couldn't even go to church Sunday. I knew a little jerk one time that ended up with, with Duhdod, what do I do now? And at this point, I think to myself, what is the next step? Uh, the purpose of the meeting this afternoon was to hear Dr. Dowdy and for you to hear him and to think among your own group as what would be best for the community of Atlanta. What would be best for the reg, the private duty nurses, the, uh, LUNs, LPNs? What would be best for all groups? And I don't know whether you want to discuss anymore this afternoon or react this afternoon or whether you wanna think about it and talk with your group that you represent here. As I said, Duhdod, what do we do now? What, what do you wanna do now?
May I make one together? Hopefully I can get our educational program going so we can all be ready. Well, apparently they worked all day yesterday.
I worked a good time yesterday.
I feel real good. I, you know, I don't think they're gonna be tomorrow, but we're getting there.
That sounds like a first procedure.
They're in the planning stage. They're in the planning stage.
Uh, in what line of, um, programs? I mean, the, the things you're setting up, what is-
The things we're setting up are in clinical practice. I mean, what general duty and the next step for that program committee is to meet with the, uh, general duty and private duty representatives to discuss what it is they want.
Section representatives.
The section representatives and get their ideas of what they want.
What kind of private duty?
Uh, we've approved three mental health, that the mental health conference group's gonna put on four. Atlanta, Augusta, Atlanta, Augusta, Macon. And Thomasville. Those will be four mental health. They're approved.
Hell, these are just gonna be your group though.
Yeah. Then there'll be one for professional, uh, legal and, um, thank you, Dr. Dowdy.
Appreciate you all wanting to come by.
Thank you, Dr. Dowdy.
What's that, you have a professional legal and, uh, ethical? There's gonna be one on that. That's been approved. Then, uh, we approved, uh, one to, the same course to be held in three different places, but that is, we're supposed to get the opinions of the private duty section and the general duties sections to come together with Mary or something. What was the final agreement on that? Anyway-
And we're, uh, this would be geriatric.
They suggested geriatrics, but that it crossed, it'd be something that would be applicable to any kind of a patient in, you know, in the clinical practice area. So I think letters were written to both of these sections and, uh, both of these sections, uh, asking them for their suggestions or to come together. I don't know which. Cause I was in and out of their meeting, like I'm in and out of everything. But there, we're planning that as a minimum for this year. And then if this gentleman I talked about sees these programs and will add money to this, then we'll get busy and try to plan others. So that's what we've approved so far.
Miss Tish, it might be-
Three, six, seven courses.
It might help though if you'd explain just a little bit about how the program committee of the GSNA operates as a coordinating group.
Yeah. Uh, last, before I came into office, there was a new bylaw, uh, there was a new bylaw, creating a new program committee. And that program committee is responsible, one, to plan programs, two, to coordinate all statewide and district-wide programs, and three, to work with districts, were asked, uh, to help them develop programs at the district level and to afford resources or facilities or do a combined program or what have you. So this, here to fore, the program committee in GSNA was only a convention program committee. And then, of course, the fourth thing this program committee has is the convention program. So really they are the, the planning, implementing and coordinating committee for the whole state. And so we hope that we will be able to stimulate districts to have programs and maybe some poor district that can't put it on themselves, the state could afford help in putting a program on for them. You see, it would work this way if they were asked. So we are committed really to a statewide educational program and moving ahead as rapidly as it's possible. In addition to this, the economic security program has a program planned for February one for all directors of nursing service. And that would be directors of public health hospitals, nursing homes, et cetera. And in March, March, they will have a statewide conference on economic security for all nurses. This will be for the whole membership.
Will that one be now?
They're not sure. It'll probably be in March sometime. And then, uh, is it, oh, and then the membership commi, oh, we've been working. The membership committee is planning a, um, program, program on how to get members. And, uh, there's an organization that will put this on free for them. And so the statewide membership committee will be working with the membership committee from all the districts in a program. So we're programming this year. I don't know how we're gonna do all this, but it's gonna be done.
Well, Miss Tish, may I answer?
And you might be dead, but, uh- We're gonna try.
Would it be your suggestion?
We'll follow along with the same amount of programs.
Well, what we're trying to do, we hope to have some of this information in our January Georgia nursing. And what isn't jailed by the time the bulletin committee meets, because you know, this is a real big bulletin. We would hope that as soon as we have our, oh, that's another thing, we're having an orientation workshop for all officers committees and so on on February twenty and twenty-one. And hopefully after that, we can get a calendar of events and that newsletter. So we, you see, instead of just having a few Georgia nursing bulletins this year, we hope to have some newsletters in addition to the bulletin. So now that's what's been planned to date and you see, it's gonna be a pretty big year if we do all that.
Would it be your suggestion then that we follow along with these same kind of programs for our front nurses? As the RNs are going to have these lot of mental health and we have one in psychiatry, we had, uh-
One of the things I would hope one day is that we could have a, a program for the whole ner, uh, have some kinds of programs for the whole nursing team. This is one of our aims. I would like to see the whole team involved in, and I've been thinking of some of this for medical college of Georgia too. Um, but I would like to see a team approach to some of these programs. But I think you must do what you feel your people need and of course you have Miss Williams who would be very helpful to you in putting these on and I'm sure getting money for you too.
Well, I'm not worrying about money at all.
If we had the money for patient, we don't have to worry about it.
But, uh, uh-
Maybe we all pride our confidence.
We ain't wanna pray so much, you see, when we set up these programs and get our, uh-
Well, get our instructors. One of the things our members have felt that the association, they have not seen come back to them in measure to what they're paying. Our dues are pretty high. So, our policy is that no member of the association shall pay for these courses. None members will pay. But none, uh, none members will pay, but members will not pay.
They'll have to make advance reservations, but they will not pay for the course. They might pay for their meal. We don't know why they're there, that kind, because we can't bear that.
And we're going to pay our dues.
But the courses will be free this year and we're going to cost-hate our classes, too. This is our policy.
Does that sound good?
Sounds excellent to me.
We pay for so much each one, for our classes, for our instructors, and we had it down at grade and everything, but...
Well, see, we hope that this budget that we have, and I couldn't, I didn't want to tell Doctor Dowder, but we've got twenty-four hundred dollars for this. And hopefully, we will be able, maybe, to get about at least a matching amount and maybe double the amount if we can swing this with our friend. This is a friend of nursing. And not only that, he will afford us a public relations officer to advertise.
That is excellent. I have maintained, oh, long-winded somebody in public relations.
Well, this will be for the program, public relations for the program. So, I, I can't swear, girls, that all of this is going to come back, but this is in our planning and yes, what I've indicated to you is pretty well gelled, except this series of three that we did not want to make a final decision on until, uh, the two sections involved, you know, could be involved as to what they would like to have. Because the committee didn't want to sit here and plan something and then not have them interested in it, you see. So, we did want to consult the two sections.
All these wonderful, all these plans sound wonderful, and I hope that many nurses will avail themselves of the opportunity.
Oh, in addition to that twenty-four hundred, beginning at our next convention, you know, forty percent of registration fees will now be put into a fund earmarked for program every year. Here to fore, each district got a hundred percent of all the registration fees plus the exhibit fees. And it has started almost a competitiveness to put on a fancier and fancier convention. And then the rest of the year, we didn't have anything much. So, the board voted that the local, the district sponsoring the convention would get sixty percent of the registration fees and the exhibit fees, and forty percent of the registration fees would come back to GSNA earmarked for programs during the year. So, that'll be, um, we figured approximately four to five hundred dollars a year will be going into programming. And this will build up over a period of time, hopefully, as our conventions might get bigger and bigger.
We've let each one of our divisions, when we'd have a meeting, come into it, and they've taken care of the expenses themselves, except state.
Well, see, they take care of a lot of it.
We let them take care of it, too.
Well, they do, but we gave them the fees. And, uh, what this becomes is one time a year, a great big affair. And what we say is, it has precluded some of the districts being willing to put on the convention because they couldn't compete. And this doesn't seem fair.
This year, the fifth district, see, it was helped in Atlanta, so the fifth district sponsored the bus trip out to the Govins' Mansion.
Do they teach the registration fee?
No, we give it to state.
That goes to state.
And then we are saying, "Our fifth division paid for the buses to go to the Govins' Mansion." And we usually always have a social night before, and that really costs us around a hundred and fifty, something more, sometimes close to two hundred dollars. But this year, we decided not to do that, and we have just taken, uh, some people had never been to the mansion anyway, so we just hired buses and went to the mansion. The fifth division paid for that. And I think it was much better than having a social hour and...
Yeah.
Uh, let me hear this, uh, Mrs. Armstrong, I'll give you, uh, let me be so bold, and and could we let her get back to her original question?
Yeah, we need to.
Uh, because she has to go to the, she's the president of the district.
I got it.
And several are going to plan to go to the meeting, so, Ms. Armstrong, I think you have a...
Actually, I'd like to go back a little bit to a commission that was given to a group of people by the board of Fifth District GSNA, and that was to move toward the establishment of some, uh, community registry. Community meaning something that would satisfy the area in which we live.
Better say metropolitan area.
Metropolitan Atlanta, Fifth District area. Uh, it did, it was, it was a term, really. Now, uh, what I would like your reaction to or some expression from you is, shall this committee move any further, desist? What is your thought regarding what Doctor Dowder had to say? Is this the direction we should move? Or have we pointed the way and is it time for the committee, the ad hoc committee, to cease? Now, we're at a point right now that's crucial.
What's the gist of the committee, to this committee?
Well, the committee, um, you want names, uh, who they are?
Representation.
Representation. We have, um, two private duty, we have one E, A C, two N S A, excuse me, N S A. And, uh, what was that on this?
Uh, well, we have it. Mrs. Armstrong is president, Mrs. Alford, private duty nurse, Mrs. Martha Davis, supervisor from Georgia Baptist Hospital, Mrs. Honeycutt, who was a private duty nurse and also chairman of the registry committee. And at that time, um, I was director of nursing at St. Joseph's. And, uh, now I'm executive secretary with the Georgia State Nursing Association. And, Miss Dishfield, as I said, if you wish me to, I may continue to work with you. And, of course, you know my name's, my name is Overton. And, Miss, uh, we, the, Mr. Marilyn Rosecrans was the, was the other director of, uh, nursing, who was on the ad hoc committee. And then the committee asked Miss Roberts to come in and lead with us and, and, uh, help us with actually the technical and aspects of trying to set up a proposal that, uh, we could, uh, send out for study by the respective people that were concerned. And so, this was the group that had, has done the, uh, work that, uh, was, has been done up to this point. And, uh, we could, we got so far and then, um, no, no far that we got pretty well stymied, I felt. And, um, uh, personally, I felt that, uh, we, that, um, a lot of what we tried to do was misinterpreted and, uh, to put it very bluntly, I think that, uh, I saw a lot of, quite a lot of the correspondence that went out from various groups. I don't know how it got to me, but anyway, I, it came to me. And if you wanted to, uh, be very, well, just blunt about it, it was, there was a, it, there was a tendency to actual malignment, um, of what was on our parts, a sincere effort to try to be of help, to give people actually something with which to start to work. And that's all it was.
There was no firm final plan of any kind.
Nothing at all. And so, it was very badly misinterpreted by everybody. And I saw the communications from the, uh, the LPNs, the registry, and also from the private duty group. And, of course, I personally was quite taken aback by all this, and, and maybe I shouldn't be saying this at this time, I should just let it go. But I think you should know how easy it is, really, for what anybody does to be misinterpreted, no matter what you do.
What kind of communication went out from LPNs? I didn't know anything about it. I mean, the doc said...
Well, the, the communications that went out to your, your own group, it regarded your registry and the questions that you asked about, uh, the proposal that we sent out.
Well, who sent this out? I mean, who, who was the one that sent this out?
I don't know.
We don't know either. That's what I'm asking.
I thought it wasn't official.
No, so I don't know anything about it.
It came from out of the yard.
Yes, it did. That's where it came.
Sure. One practical nurse sent some of the fifth district, in which they had copied the entire proposal by the ad hoc committee and had duplicated it on there, but did not state up above that this, you know, was a copy. And, uh, many people thought it went out from fifth district. In fact, we got emails from several practical nurses and having, thinking fifth district did it.
You know, really, I would not like to get into feelings right now.
Well, and...
I don't, I mean, I hope this group is here interested in nursing in Atlanta.
Well, so am I, Ms. Armstrong, but I think, I think we do have a right to say that if you are going to ask people to work and you really want them to work to help you, then, uh, I think you have to at least give them the benefit of the doubt and at least give them the opportunity to explain, or they're not going to, they're not going to be willing to spend their time working and then to take what really begins to amount to downright abuse, uh, because there are more important things that they can be doing that maybe will be more helpful.
We had hoped, too, to turn our thoughts this year to...
They sent our office...
Our education. And, and some more constructive, um, beneficial meetings and so forth. Because for so many years, this is what has taken up our time.
That's right.
Was turned to...
We need to get back to ventilating.
Well, what I would like to ask is, would it be helpful if, if maybe we simply, uh, if you don't, uh, i- if the group that, uh, was working on it's not satisfactory, uh, perhaps, uh, another group was appointed with representation, if, if the, the other associations wish to be represented, uh, with representation from them? In other words, change the structure of the committee, take whatever was done that, I mean, what, the work that was done and what you can use of it, use and, and go on from there.
Well, this might be, but you see, our direction was from the board of the Fifth District GSNA, and we couldn't go beyond the, uh, the, uh, the membership. Margaret, let me, uh, ask you one question. Is there in any foreseeable future, the possibility of the community council, maybe I ought to ask Veretta, the community council being even interested in this, you see, or being able to be interested?
Well, this I was going to say, I think that it needs clarifying, that the community council is a, a planning, you know, trying to, to bring people together and to anticipate needs and this sort of thing, but it is not a service...
That's right.
Ongoing, service operating agency. So, I think this needs to be clarified. So, I would not see the community council...
I wouldn't even press say, uh, operating a service like this, no. They would be, and have, of course, the reason I'm sure that I originally got involved in this was that the medical society, the community council, uh, at the request of the Woodruff Foundation, had organized a committee that did go through some study. And, um, I, as staff member, was asked to sit in the committee meetings, and I'm sure that's the only reason, and it's the most I knew about the whole thing. And so, then, whatever I could bring to this, uh, but the council, I would not. Now, there are some other things that are known by the council in terms of planning, that there might be somebody that is related to the same kind of thinking at the moment. There is not one, there are one or two that might dovetail or might not, but it's for this kind of thing that the council exists.
Well, this was my interpretation.
Provide the service.
And with the community chest being pressured as it is, I could not see them much, and I could be, this could be a wrong judgment, uh, but I really can't see them underwriting this for any length of time. So, it would almost have to go back to a private foundation and, and I don't know about Fifth Dist- District, but one time in a fundraising campaign, which was a very worthy thing, I tried to approach foundations for a year with some very influential people on my committee, and we didn't get anywhere in a whole year. So, then, my next thinking is, would, uh, the private duty nurses perhaps like to hear Doctor Dowdy's proposition?
I think so. Well, I've already talked to him. Uh, you know, private duty nurses are setting up their own registry. This is going into effect, I believe, the fifteenth of January. And Doctor Dowder has been talking to...
None members who are forming a registry?
They are forming a nursing professional registry, not using Fifth District.
Can't be a nursing professional registry if it doesn't carry the Fifth District name.
Well, they have an attorney with them, working on it.
They could get into very great trouble if they use our name or any connotation of our name.
They're not using it. They're just saying Nurses Professional Registry. We are RNs, we are professional people, what's wrong with that? Professional Nurses Registry.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm just... The only comment I'm saying is, Miss Alford, that you cannot use the association's name.
We're not using their name. It's Nurses Professional Registry. Doctor Dowder is aware of this, and he has talked to a lot of the private duty nurses at Piedmont, because I've been over there, and...
But you see, if, now, we're not talking about that, I was not talking to that registry. I was saying, the Fifth District Association Private Duty Nurses, would they like to hear Doctor Dowdy officially and make a recommendation to your board? I can't tell you what to do. This is Fifth District business. I'm just opening up questions, you see.
He's a form, a private duty nurses' club. And it's the private duty nurses' club that is going to operate, own and operate their registry.
Shall be called Professional Registered Nurses Club of Metropolitan Atlanta.
It's going to be called Nurses Professional Registry.
I got Registered Nurses Club. I have the whole thing here.
Well, we discussed and thought that he better call the listing in the phone book. People looking, they would want to see the word nurses first.
They're going to have to change that. They had, Doctor Dowder has been talked to at Piedmont, was there when he was talked to, he practiced there mostly. Well, see, he thinks that there should be a registry of just RN. He thinks there should be other allied medical people in it, but the RNs feel that they should have a registry of their own, professional nurses' registry, not use Fifth District or GSNA or anything.
Well, of course, A and X says this, except that, uh, theoretically, the professional association at that level, uh, should have some contractual agreement, as I explained to Doctor Dowdy, for the screening of people. But you see, I don't think in this meeting or in Fifth District meeting, we can discuss any other group that's forming, you see, because this is not our responsibility. We can only, um, I mean... We can only, I mean, the only approach I see as far as Dr. Doughty is, if he can talk to our official private duty section and then get their feeling as to whether they are interested in this type of an arrangement. And I would see if the private, Licensed Practical Nurse Private Duty and the LUN Private Duty are not satisfied with their arrangement, do they want to go into? And I think it's their decision to make. But we can only speak, and Fifth District can only speak, for their official private duty section, you see.
Well, I think the Private Duty Section would be glad to talk to Dr. Doughty. While the private duty nurses have a lot to talk to.
I just raised the question, if this might not be the first step to find out how they feel about it. And then if they are interested in that, the, there would have to be a safeguard in terms, and Dr. Doughty agrees with this, on some type of a contractual commitment for some unit, and I would presume it would be the official registry committee of Fifth District, that would have to assume responsibility for screening all applicants and recommending them to this answering service. Well, the sad thing about it is now the public is left without anyone. And I have talked to so many people.
Anyone that just came in, in the administrative section? General Duty Section? Public Health? Private Duty Section? And four. If there are no objections, we would like to have our program at this time. Oh, here, we'll go ahead there. The President of Having Communications Spring at this time. Secretary of Board of Directors. I have a report from the board meeting of Monday this week. There was no official action taken, unless what we did was appoint whoever's two standing committees. My trifocus of getting out of line is something I'm skippily asking for the minutes to maybe go back and have a reading of that. The regular reading of the Fifth District GSNA was held on Thursday, November fourteenth, nineteen sixty-eight, the Woodruff Auditorium at St. Joseph's, four thirty. This is Margaret Armstrong, President of Presiding. Roll call by sections EACT five, Administrator eight, General Duty three, Public Health eight, Private Duty four, and there were none from Occupational Health. A quorum was established. The minutes of the previous meeting were approved as read. Reports of bylaws committee motion that the proposed revision of bylaws be substituted for the present bylaws was carried in favor eighteen, opposed four, and not voting seven. Communications from the President, report from GSNA convention in Rome. Of forty-six thousand dollars, forty-six thousand twenty dollars budget was approved. Physician approved for an executive secretary. New offices elected, and a motion for flexible membership, which was not to be January first to January first. This motion was defeated. There was no report of the secretary. Financial report was presented by the Treasurer and will be filed for audit. The Treasurer also presented the report of the registry monthly account. This was filed for audit. The auditors' report of the Nurses Professional Registry was read and adopted. Report of the Executive Secretary, Goddard said. The resume of the meeting of Board of Directors was presented by the Secretary. There was no official action taken. Appointments to standing committees will be made following acceptance of the proposed revision of bylaws. No reports of standing or special committees, and no section reports. Meeting adjourned at five forty-five. Any additions or corrections to that? Here and now, this time approved, as read. And we have a report of the Treasurer.
Time report for November, December report not completed yet. And the bound report from the Chosens, one thousand five hundred eighty-three dollars and fifty-two cents. Under receipts of the month for membership dues of ten dollars, HANS subscription, six dollars, visiting is ten, total of twenty-six dollars. Total overall amounts, one thousand nine hundred and ninety-two cents. The disbursement, rent is sixty-three dollars and fifty cents. Salary, five hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-two cents. Telephone, sixty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. Failing postage, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and forty cents. Supplies and operations, twenty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents. HANS subscription, five dollars, tax, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty cents. Visiting is nine-three dollars and forty-two cents, eighty-two cents. Bound, one thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. We divided, we divided states, and the bond, ninety-six dollars and forty-three cents. And also, supplies and the land, we have two thousand five hundred and twenty dollars and forty-two cents.
Any other questions? Report will be filed. And we have a report of the Executive Secretary?
Thank you. We have some, in fact, we have a whole file of the bylaws reprinted with the corrections that you will package for errors. So if any of you did not receive them?
Oh, we'll have plenty of all our new members, as well as the old ones. Another thing I'd like to bring out again, as I usually do, if you don't get your schedule card, these are all calendars with schedule cards mailed in December. They came back. So we'd like very much for them to keep us informed of the changes of addresses. Most of them have either moved and disappeared, leave addresses, or for some reason, they were returned. And I think what I'll tell you, we've, of course, been busy with the usual routine of setting up our programs for the year in the office. The application blank was delayed. We only received one hundred before Christmas. Monday, we had three thousand of the, for new members. Of course, those of you who are already members renewed directly to New York. But I'd like to emphasize this to you. We tried to save money, and you will not have any more of the carbon copy application plans. We are sending it out as soon as the other material comes in, the little leaflet from New York that will be distributed next week. We hope we'll get them. Any of your friends joining now, ask them to be sure to send us a little statistical card. And just add a little bit more for references in schools of nursing. And we'll need those until we get our, our statistical system worked out. I thought you'd like to know that we started off better this year than we did last year, with the end of the month before we even got a check of any kind. And when I came in the office Monday, we'd passed thirteen hundred dollars from ANA. Fifty-six of that were subscription dues, and we renewed the fifty cents. It's still sent to us for checking the files. And then we had a hundred and forty dollars from last year sent to us. So we have a hundred and thirty-two members cleared in ANA. This report is dated December the eighteenth, which is most encouraging. We have a hundred and thirty-two members. And I thought you'd like to know them by sections. EATC fourteen, General Duty twenty-seven, Nursing Service thirty-five, Occupational Health six, Office Nursing one, Public Health twenty-four, Psychiatric, which we don't have, one, Headroom, which we do not have, two, and Unknown, one, making the total of a hundred and thirty-two. We are looking for great things in the office, and we hope that all of you will help us in terms of both our program of meeting our budget, meeting our quota, and call on us if we may assist you.
Next, our agenda, a report of standing committees. I would not expect to have many reports since we're still in the process of filling these committees. However, very quickly, let me ask, is there a report of bylaws?
No.
Ethical, legal, professional standards? Finance? Membership promotion, English?
No, I know two of you people joined this last week, but we'd like very much to get, technically, put in some cards, so we can probably have a session right away.
None? Emergency health preparedness and national defense? I skipped the next one, but more. I will call Ms. Lock for program, because she might want to say something about
The committee, as I made it scheduled, the sixteenth of December, we're asking some of the other committees, who may have the slightest chance maybe was to get this year, in order to help plan Friendship Dunham. We felt most indeed, you know, lots of strength, because they, we're trying to be good, trying to list as many as possible as possible. Friendship Dunham is to be February the fourteenth, we're having it. One of my committee members, I guess we could say the co-program chapter just came in. Ms. Charity, would you like to tell them why we don't have Friendship Dunham? It's not fair, I know, but then never will we.
It'll be at six-thirty, on, on February the fourteenth, Valentine's Day, that's Friday. And it'll be in the Cox Hall Food Service Building in Hillary. Up the elevator, in I guess the Blue Room or the Global Room. And as far as parking is concerned, they tell me they can't promise anybody that Friday would be the very best day.
And we are wanting to have an excellent meal for four dollars. Ms. Charity promises the very best that Atlanta can provide. And we're hoping to have an excellent program. One of the featured part of the program will be the speaker, who is Dr. Langsner. He has accepted Noah Langsner. So we hope that we will have an excellent program. We'll have some other things, music programs, other things on addition. But the program committee will plan this there. The sixteen will actually be a promise. But you can put on your calendar, the fourteenth, and do list everybody's plan to come and bring their husband or their daughter, and whoever they wish to bring. Because we would like to really make this friendship. Now, I'll just go on and do the program if you wish we do. And then when she calls, we'll get started. I would like you all to meet Mrs. Miles, Ms. Gerald Fisher Miles, who was bringing up the program today. Mrs. Miles is with the Georgia Society of the Provincial Planes. And I would like to tell my program committee and you, my fellow members, what I did. I had a report from three committees. One of them was Caroline, who I've always talked to before with. And the other one was our president, Margaret. And the other one was Wes Goll, who I talked to, and I told him that. I knew it was late to do it, but I felt like that you, our program members, would like your program committee to do this. And that was to ask Mrs. Miles if she would mind presenting co-program at a later time, on things that had to do with our topic. The reason I asked her to do this was because I thought there were other current issues before us, and I said that we might want to, as a group, vote. Of course, being a nurse, I had to come out and deal with it. I was talking to Caroline to get a, a, a program. Now, I think that also a nurse, one member has tweeted, so it, of this association. So we ended up by presenting a little membership, like, we now have a few months. So she says she will wait and potentially meet at a later date. Now, the other thing that I had my four consultant squads, since they think it will be a good idea, since there have been some things about us, since the paper lately, and in the television, and radio, saying this talking program they have on, what is that? Right there, that you've been on that too. That it might be just as well for us to ask our president, Miss Stitchfield, to come and give us her poems of the economic experience program, and pray that, um, that you give us, um, Lord, my Lord, count it, you would, have things to avoid. And also, let us, as nurses, talk about what is to happen. I know that there's never been two people that follow exactly their life. And I think one of the ways that our strengths have come is because we have used our brains to think. However, I think that we need to think together, and we need to think of how we are going to present to the general public the issues that are before us to face. And this is what we want to talk about with that. When I, we, if you had the experience I've had, you had something like this happen. I talk to non-nursing friends, and after we finish the business at hand, they usually end up saying, well, when are you going to stop? And this is what you get. When I say, I don't know what you're talking about. Oh, what is, and we go on. Oh, what is, and we go on, it's, there is a real lack of knowledge, which I'm proud to tell you. It's what it is we want. And it's not just, I would say, but I would be foolish to say we don't want a living wage. We do want a living wage. But there are other things. And these are the things that I am talking with the, the more people I mention. I ask if didn't think maybe that now is the time for us, as a professional group of persons, to just get together and say what we would like to say, uh, to try and get correct information. And not misinformation, so many big things, uh, just maybe don't have the whole bit of information. So, this is what I'm asking you to do today. I've asked Miss Ditchfield to come down. She's come from one meeting, going to another. And even though I know she is worn out and, and exhausted, it seemed important enough to hook today the issues before us to put into her fragile skin, an opportunity to give us a proper to poet on this program. And the reason I asked Miss Miles, and when I sat there, she was a lady, I guess I should have known anyway, she needs to know to, she want our new members, all of you just add that to your program, she don't know. Uh, uh, she needs to know to what the issues are. Now, I don't mean we don't know, everyone I know. But let's think of what it is we're thinking, or what we want to do. And those are for you to demonstrate with, and have the time to speak to. Now, knowing Miss Ditchfield, uh, I think she will be happy to encourage questions and answers. If you want to do, uh, any kind of panel or anything you want to do, I'll go get you some water on the co-program. Uh, whatever you can talk. I might get some water. All right, I'll get some water. But, uh, this, this is what, this guy has, has, uh, been willing to post forward. Now, I'd like to say another thing. I think it's wonderful to see all of you. I hope you'll come next month. We're gonna meet, and I would give beautiful help, and we think it's good one. And we want you to all come. But I don't want us to make these meetings any extended. And we can do it if you all will come. I would like to say that two of us formed ourselves instead of helping. I mean, you know, I believe this is the secret of so much attendance. Because we did call some of the key people in nursing, we had everybody to call somebody else. And I just appreciate you coming. It's not a big deal. But don't hesitate to put into words any of the anxieties you've had. And let's see if as a professional group, we can, and make sure that the information we have is valid information. I don't need to introduce Miss Ditchfield too. She is the president of our Georgia State Nurses Association. She has been devoted to all of the, uh, causes of nursing for two, three years. And then the next board leader, Ms. Yar, I think is President of the Ditchfield.
Thank you, Ms. Yar. We're in trouble times. Your President, Mark, is a decaf nurse. Not being sure whether she might get impeached by the President's say. Decaf nurses are laying their jobs on the line for you and me. Could your President be blessed? I have a speech here written by Dorothy Kelly, who is editor of the Catholic Nurse. And she gave this speech to a Wisconsin State Nurses Association meeting. I'm not going to read it, but I might say to you that this is available from the State Nurses Association as a reprint with permission of Miss Kelly to disseminate it. So, if you wanted, call the Georgia State Nurses Association. I want to read two brief paragraphs because it gives you your President's philosophy. She says, "What about the nursing profession? Well, I for one would not attempt to defend the notion that nursing is free from an inferiority complex, a very large one indeed. And what is more, it shows. To me, the single most important indication of our vast inferiority complex, which is not the same as being inferior, is our failure to our local organized units. The unit as nurses, regardless of our individual status, is important. We have many nurses, well-qualified professionals themselves, who are not quite sure that nursing is a profession, not yet anyway. We have many more who often, in inverse proportion to their willingness to assume professional obligations, protest the in place any slight suggestion that it takes more than technical skill to make a professional nurse. We have nurses who think it is more important to the part of management to be part of management than to be a nurse. And this in spite of their being used all too often to deny their own profession, and rarely if ever to have anything to say about management. We have nurses who think it is more important to get along with hospital authority than it is to demand that nurses be able to provide good care for patients or to maintain standards in the attraction of their own profession. I am not opposed to peace or to any proposed relations. I am opposed to the price we have to pay for it, for what looks like harmony, but which I assure you is only the lull before the storm. The price is poor patient care, loss of control of our own profession, and eventually a complete inability to attract into the profession dedicated imaginative young people who are becoming more and more dead at spotting inferiority complexes before and not after the complex has been thrust on them by the whole profession." End quote. I believe in this. What is going to be your position? The decaf nurses are laying their jobs on the line for you. Are you going to let them down, or are you going to support them? The decaf nurses have, uh, have responded, according to the public, in the most responsible, restrained way. They received a letter from a administration saying that they would talk with the President and the Economic Security Director of GSNA, but not to their own nurses. This was considered an insult by the decaf nurses. The President replied that she would be, be in a position to betray the local unit of decaf if we did this. We have exercised every means of working something through in a democratic way. The decaf nurses and the Georgia State Nurses Association have been denied the very democratic processes that many of our people died for in the past. If some of you have forgotten, democracy was born and bred in the Judeite Christian religion. You cannot be something of a Roman Catholic. You can't be something of a Hebrew. You can't be something of a Protestant, whatever denomination. You either are or you aren't. And you either believe in democracy or you don't believe in it. The Nurses Association, as far back as nineteen sixty-four, began to work for economic security. The vote for the program in sixty-six did not have a dissenting vote. There were some, some extinctions, but no nays. One year of waiting went by, and surely, three hundred and sixty-five days is enough time for nurses to decide whether this was or wasn't what they wanted. And in nineteen sixty-seven, we implemented the program. In nineteen sixty-eight, we went back to the convention and asked, "Is this what you want?" And again, it was passed. And as I remember, no dissenting voices. Now, why are we having dissension now? Is it because it's on our own doorstep? Are you going to let the five hundred nurses who have organized under our economic security program swing it along? And walk out on them? The decaf nurses are holding the line. If we lose this negotiation, if we are not recognized at this spot, we can put the six dollars you've given to this program per member in the Chattahoochee because there will be no program. On behalf of the decaf nurses, I'm asking for your support. We have gone the extra mile, and we're still looking for extra miles to go in trying to get this settled. We have even offered mediation to the decaf hospital association. We're waiting for a clock. In other words, mediation is that we ask for an outside, unbiased, non-prejudiced person or groups of persons to come in and help us with this problem. I don't know whether this will be accepted or not. To me, this is way beyond the extra mile. All these nurses are asking for at present time is to be recognized and that their association be recognized. And it is being denied. Any questions? I'll answer any questions except as related to fine points of negotiation, which we're not even into, or as to immediate plans that the decaf county nurses might have. I'm not deliberately to disclose this, except what has already been publicly made known. And, uh, I don't think they know either because we're meeting tonight. Uh, we'll be going out there after this meeting.
Has the decaf county medical society been asked to force their opinion?
No, we were, Mr. Kravitz had to go to New York to a staff conference that was planned months ago, uh, the, uh, all the units, and particularly the decaf, is in the midst of planning to contact other associations. A letter was to have gone out to the medical association. However, before that letter got out, and I'm not sure I should even tell this because I have milk for Mr. Kravitz to tell it to the girls tonight. We're holding off on that letter because the Medical Association of, uh, Georgia, with a, uh, the decaf county medical association representative, as I understand, has requested a meeting Sunday at twelve o'clock with the President and Mr. Kravitz, uh, not to negotiate, not to go into any of these problems, but they want to know our side of it, as well as the hospital's side of it. And then, as I understand it, they will make a decision as to, uh, what position they will take. So, we're holding off on that letter since, before we got it out, during the process of preparing these, the Medical Association, uh, approached us for a conference with the Executive Committee of the Medical Association of Georgia. Did that answer your question?
I don't know if this can tell us, had, and as the hospital authority could ever given any reason other than this statement, which sounds attractive back on television, we're treated. What made it reasonable, I would imagine?
Are there any, any members of the decaf negotiating committee here? I don't want to put you on the spot, but I don't know whether... This, I can answer, this was replied to. He was asked what his reasons were, and he gave one reason, and, uh, they weren't sure of their legal status. But, uh, this is no problem. And then they were asked if, uh, there were any other reasons, and they were told yes, but they wouldn't discuss it. So, that's the answer.
Miss Ditchfield, oh. I don't read anything unpleasant, but I'm a little, uh, disturbed about the word dissension you used. I've, I've only known it from what I read in the paper, and I didn't realize there was this among our organization. I mean, I know there's a suspension between these two groups that are trying to get together. But I thought we were together on this. I mean, I was convinced at both times, and it's passed, I think we knew this was probably coming. And I didn't realize the nurses, the nursing organization, were listening.
We've had many, many members question this, and many members not in favor, and, uh, much underground discussion of things that are occurring that I could not discuss because I personally do not have actual proof. And what I was saying is that there should be no reason for dissension because this was approved unanimously twice by the nursing body. So, I must assume that in mass, we are together. I'm urging that this be expressed to the decaf nurses. You see, the decaf nurses said to me, "Miss Ditchfield, we hear you saying that GSNA is behind us, but we haven't seen evidence." That's why I march. And that's why I'm going to the meeting tonight. They have a right to see evidence. Fifth District Nurses Association is about one-third of our total membership in the state. Approximately one-third of our total membership. And many of the decaf nurses, uh, belong to this association. Some belong, I think, to Thirteenth District. Did that answer your question?
Yes. I think many, uh, members have maybe been a bit confused. While supporting a program, and I'm speaking of program in the broad sense, I think there are some questions being raised by individual members as to the position of GSNA. And I think the questions in effect are, does the GSNA intend or have as a goal that all nurses forever be organized in units for collective bargaining? Or is this a part of the program, or is... Or is this a part of the program, or is this the program? Is this all of the program?
I can say with all honesty that no representative of the Georgia State Nurses Association has entered any place of employment with the sole purpose of organizing. We have only entered a place of employment on invitation to interpret the program in an insertion application program or to a district meeting. We have not entered a single hospital and asked a single nurse to organize. We have said what we have been invited, this is our program, this is what it entails, GSNA sponsors it. They approach us, and they organize, and they set up their Bible, they set up a negotiating committee, they set up a professional practice committee, and I think without single exception in the nine units organized, every unit has a professional practice committee that has asked that the director of nurses be on that professional practice committee. To my knowledge, I have not read these in great detail, but to my knowledge, I don't think the director of nurses has been left off of one of these proposals. Now, naturally, if we have an economic security program sponsored by GSNA, we would hope the nurses would use it. Now, you may think I'm talking out of both sides of my mouth. I'm not. I'm saying we will make known that we have a program. We will offer GSNA's resources and support. We will not enter a working, a place of employment, and rattle off to organize. This we do not do, and have not done. Does that answer your question? Are I asking in a different way?
The question is, what is, and I know when you talk about GSNA, you're talking about all members.
All, every member has a right.
Right, but these are also members.
That's right.
Who are asking the question.
That's right.
Is this the intent of GSNA as an organization? In other words, I understand all that you have said. This is a service, this is a part of the program, use it if you want. The question is, is the intent that this not be an optional, if you like, but in time, this is the program? Well, I can answer this as an individual too.
It's optional, yes, in that we will not force organization of units. This desire must arise within each, at each place of employment by each group of nurses. It arises within an institution, and they approach us. And it is our hope that wherever nurses may have problems, that we would organize units. And frankly, between you and me and your gatepost, I don't know anybody that doesn't need our help. And I'm not talking about salaries. I'm talking about the right of a voice in decision-making that affects the individual nurse. This is what I mean by democracy.
I think the public doesn't understand what that means. We've got to be able to give some examples. I think this is...
I'll give you a very good example that a nurse gave me. This is a place where, in the top side, I believe the top side of Atlanta, as I remember, but that makes no difference, except we feel kind of hot right now in Atlanta. But the laboratory department, as I understand it, was kind of pressured, and they didn't want to or couldn't or something employ a laboratory technician. So the technologist goes to the administrator and says, "Look, I think all the nurses could do, take the bloods for PSPs or blood chemistries, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." And so, without any discussion of the nurse, and very often, one nurse on the unit with non-adulatory personnel, you know, you know what our situation is. And so, without any discussion, the administrator gets a memo out to the director of nurses and says, "Over a certain date, your nurses will do, will draw all these bloods every morning." And the director of nurses sends a memo on down to each unit, to the staff. Well, you see, the nurse says, "Is this nursing? What's happening to my patients when I'm the only nurse, the only registered nurse? I don't know. I haven't had a chance to look at my patients. I haven't had a chance to find out what their needs are. I'm not drawing blood. My professionals or non-professionals are working without supervision." Well, you see, do we have a right to determine what nursing should be? You know? And I could multiply through my own observational experiences this same type of thing by thousands of examples over the state of Georgia. I went to an institution, and I know some of you are tired of hearing this, but it happened not too long ago, and the administrator was looking very worried. And I, he's a good friend of mine, a good Joe, and I said, "What's troubling you?" And he said, "Oh, this nurse short, she just tells me crazy." I said, "Well, where's Miss so-and-so, your full-time nurse?" "Well, she's down in the basement taking my inventory." I said, "Man, you're not short of nurse, you're short of inventory taker." And then what happened to, it really wasn't funny, because there were twenty-seven very ill patients out in that hospital with no one but LPNs and nurses A. And I said, "I happen to know you have a seven-day-a-week, part-time nurse, four hours a day. Where's she?" "Well, she's taking x-rays." I said, "Well, last time I was here, you told me that you had purposely employed a laboratory technician who couldn't take x-rays, was also trained in x-ray." He said, "But she doesn't like to take x-rays." I said, "Well, man, you're not short of nurse, you're short of x-ray technicians." You see, here was twelve hours of RN service available to twenty-seven patients in a hospital not being used for nursing. This is what our program's talking about, not just salary. You see, the decaf nurses very plainly and publicly said, "It is recognition and a right that we're after."
Miss Ditchfield, I appreciate what you've been saying, and my knowledge about what the decaf nurses are doing is strictly from the news media also, but this is what I cannot understand. I agree with every word you've said, but the news media have not brought up anything except that it's a right to have more salary, the right to a living. The second question I had, why has this not been done through the news media to tell a story such as you have told? There was a letter to the editor yesterday, which was very good, and pointed out some of the things. I have another question, and that is, how can we as individuals support the decaf nurses?
You can write to the administration, you can write to the hospital authority, you can write to the newspapers, you can publicly to friends and neighbors, ask them to write, supporting this. We have tried. If you think it is easy to get news space, it isn't. The decaf nurses have done a beautiful job of getting the news media, and on the whole, the news media has not been too bad to us. But they are going to play up what is going to be, in their estimation, newsworthy, not what is newsworthy in our estimation. This is their right, and we recognize this. We recognize this. Now, many of our nurses have said this, who are involved in this unit. I've heard them say it publicly. I think probably more was said on WRING, or WRN, whatever you call it. It did real good. I didn't get to hear it, but I heard the tape. I sat and listened to the tape, and it was very well done, I thought, for an impromptu type of thing. There were lots of things in my, in my capacity as an educator, I would have liked to have, for instance, if I was in on there, I would have given more information about scholarship availability and scholarship, but you know, when you're on there and these are popped to you, you're not quite as ready as when you sit back and think what you might do. Yes, Ms. Pope?
Ms. Ditchfield, I think that's wrong.
What is it?
That's wrong.
Wrong! Oh, wrong! Well, you know, I feel wrongy right now.
I did think that, to save the story, probably puts a nurse in a position of being unattractive. How do you tell the public? I really ask this in good faith, that I am the nurse, the board to patients, and if the board gets something that's built, I have to also mount that up. I really do think that we probably, and it has, and I am an officer of GSNA, and I say this as a medical nurse, that what can you say? How far can you really, how much of the truth can we really tell the public?
You see, I spent three hours...
If I'm a patient, and this will not be solved, it's not...
I spent three hours with our lawyer yesterday on this very subject, because you see, Mr. Kravitz was accused, and he really didn't say it. You know, he didn't say, you know, they put horns on Mr. Kravitz. And he's our employer! Hey, you're sticking me! And you know, every once in a while, I look at him, and I say, "Stan, are you going to get it to pay? You're going to cover the buck." But he was accused publicly, if you've read the paper very carefully, of saying that the decaf hospital did not have safe nursing care or good nursing care, or something to that effect. And Mr. Kravitz did not say it. What he, what he and nurses had said was better care or improvement of care. Well, do any of us deny that there's room for improvement in all of our nursing services? In fact, the decaf nurses and Mr. Kravitz had said publicly that this was one of the very finest hospitals, but in the rebuttal, it came out, in a very critical rebuttal, that we accused them of not having, you know, good care, and he really didn't say that. So you have to be very careful when you start talking about nursing care and what we can say publicly. It's very difficult. Yes, Ms. Rosenberger?
I do read loads to the editor, Charlotte, and I would be afraid to enter a hospital right now from one registered nurse's comment about the name...
Well, frankly, sometimes you wonder.
Yeah, well, I work in a hospital, and I don't think they're that bad.
I do too.
Um, I'm also having some problems about what you just said, Mr. Kravitz talked about, better patient care. I have heard him say this.
But this is all right, this is, don't we all want better care?
Yes, ma'am, and motherhood, and Thanksgiving, and all that good stuff. But how does this sort of thing, I don't see the direct relationship to, it's not a strike, you told me at ANA, we wouldn't strike, but mass resignations, I don't see the relationship between that and better patient care. Who can help me with that, I'm a rich head of...
Georgia State Nurses Association cannot tell a unit what to do or not to do. We can advise. There has been no group of nurses, in my knowledge and reading all the literature, who have conducted themselves with greater restraint than the decaf nurses have conducted themselves. Resignation is a right of every individual. We hope, and I have said this, I said this before it even came to this point in a personal conversation with administration, I said, "I would hope you would never force us to do something that would make us cry our souls out." And that's what is happening to me and every decaf nurse, and many of you here I know. We don't want this, we didn't ask for it. We conducted ourselves like ladies with great restraint. But what's the relationship between that and better patient care? A great deal. In, since the study of ANA was done, in nineteen, MLN was done in nineteen fifty-nine, Georgia has had increasingly fewer nurses each year. We have had letters, I had a letter when Mr. Kravitz first came, I turned over to him, from California, and this was printed in the Economic Security Newsletter with the girl's permission. They would be happy, and several other nurses beside herself would be happy to come back to Georgia if salaries could be improved, because she found living conditions in California no higher than in Atlanta. And this is a fact, if you read the Menpower Report studies. Atlanta is one of the fifteen major cities in the United States. It has the fifth highest per capita cost of living, and salaries for nurses are fifteenth down. So the disparity between income and cost of living is a major reason why we're having a decline in nurses. I did a beta book study in nineteen, near the fifties in Georgia, and we were recruiting four-point-something, I can't recall off the top of my head, nurses, from, you know, young women, four-point-something percent of all women high school graduates were going into nursing. The vast majority of these into schools of nursing in the state of Georgia, with a small percentage of them going outside of Georgia. Right now, according to the GEIC study, Georgia Educational Improvement Council, a governor's study, we are at an all-time low on recruitment, an all-time low. Now, we've watched this. I've watched it as a member of GSNA, we're almost sixteen years now. I predicted it back in nineteen fifty-nine, six years after I came to Georgia, that we would be destitute before the nineteen seventy-four nurses at the rate we were voted. And we are, our patients are desperate. Every day, almost, in the state of Georgia, we're opening up beds, or health units, or nursing homes. And yet, the numbers of nurses are decreasing, and the demand's increasing. And I feel that, well, I don't feel, if you read your journal, there's a direct relationship between the effectiveness of the economic security program for nurses in the states where they have it and recruitment. I know for a fact that there was a director of nurses from California, Nancy, Nancy here, she could verify this for me, a director of nurses from California has been coming to Georgia for a good many years, putting up in the deluxe motel apartment suite, putting an advertisement in the Atlanta paper, asking the new graduates, you know, come and see her, and she goes out to California with her staff bill for the next year. That's how some of these girls that are writing to us now... That's how some of these girls that are writing to us now got out there. Now California, some places in California are sending information out, "Do please not come to California without clearing your job first because we don't have many vacancies." The highest ratio of nurses to population is found in those states that have effective economic security programs. You can document this for yourself, don't take my word for it, from the journals. You can document. My concern is for patient care. And the means whereby we can increase the number of nurses in Georgia. That's my personal concern.
As a government employee, I would like to bring this up here, although I'm sure we lost one of our meetings. But as a government employee, if I go out to the decaf hospital and stay and walk with the nurses in visiting, where do I place myself? I have heard criticism of government nurses who have done it, and I want to know, if, if you know, where do we stand as far as doing the public service?
Those girls, and I would assume you are spending your own time and not your duty time, not your work time. And I would hope that we still have a democratic nation that would permit our use of leisure time as we see fit. I didn't know what my dean might still fire me, I don't know. I didn't count the cost. I looked at it, I looked at it, but I didn't count. There was no time to count the cost. We voted for it, these girls are in it, and it's up to us to support. Mary, did you have a question?
Yes, and I wanted to ask you, try to give us some information on the pros and cons of collective bargaining versus the pros and cons, cons of administration that is progressive and is listening and is interested and is willing to work.
Shall I answer that as president of GSNA, as a major in administration, or from what standpoint?
You can use them all.
As a major in administration with a minor in personnel work, graduate level and postgraduate work, I would say that any institution that has practiced the essence of participatory management, their nurses would see no need for this. If I answered, from a member of the human race who believes in the dignity of mankind and the right of the individual to have a voice in decisions that affect them, I would answer you the same. If I answered you as a member of the Georgia State Nurses Association, I would say that irregardless of how superb my management might be, I would still be interested in having an organized group that could look objectively or subjectively and openly at how I as an individual might support my administration and other people, but that I also, as a professional, have a contribution to make, and I would like an opportunity to make it. So there are many ways of looking at this, and I may not have answered your question.
Could you, on, on the first part of the question, then, well, there are always two sides here. What are the pros to collective bargaining? Because there have been some advantages, and what are the disadvantages of collective bargaining? Because I think we have to have something to weigh-
I think the major-
-to make decisions of.
I would say the major advantage of collective bargaining to nurses in today's world is that we either have it or we have unions organizing us. And I am not adverse to reputable, organized unions. I mean, I'm not a labor person. But I think professionals should determine their own destiny, and therefore the professional association should be in control of a program that provides this opportunity for its nurses. And I think the greatest advantage of collective bargaining to nursing as a profession today is that it protects us against this very thing. And I can give you an example of this. If a, um, industry in the South belongs to a union that's nationally organized, and they go on strike in Timbuktu, it pulls out the nurses here, I mean, it pulls out the industry, people here. In other words, the local group is not the determining factor. In our program, it's the nurses themselves in this unit who are the determining factors, not the remote ANA or even GSNA. We support them, we guide them, we counsel them, we try to help them. But the final decision as to what they do rests with the group. So I think this is a great advantage over pressures on the other side from other types of organizations. I think that collective bargaining has proven itself in providing a democratic avenue of feeding in what each individual has to contribute. We know that, I, I said it when I read Kelly, we have a, however democratic we want to make it, we have a hierarchical structure in most organizations of employment, and particularly in nurses. And I think the advantage here is nurses are saying to administration, to their nursing administration and to hospital administration, "Look, we might not know it all, but we are nurses, we are at the work level, the patient level, we have some ideas. We'd like to think them through. We'd like to think them through with you and work towards them. And if the director helps them to do this, it's no problem." Now, there are certain things that as a director, she cannot negotiate with these girls. I, I had a nurse call me, and she doesn't have an organized unit, she's a director of nurses. She called me last week, and she said, "Mrs. Stone is so angry, I don't know what to do." She said, "My administrators, my nurses, myself, our auxiliary personnel, we've all agreed on set, what we consider satisfactory personnel policies, but the board of trustees say that if I, if they approve these policies, they'll be given into a union." She says, "I want to know how I could set up an organized unit under GSNA and get this thing taken care of." I said, "Maybe you'll have to do it." She said, "But I dare say, because I'm the director." But you see, nurses are pushed into these things. She doesn't have an organized unit. But here's the board of trustees that thinks the mere fact of approving satisfactory personnel policies because they're already implementing the policy, they won't sign them because, quote, "It's unionism." I mean, what are the advantages of collective bargaining? The person for whom decisions are made has a voice in decision-making. To me, that's the greatest advantage.
Another thing that we want to keep in mind, why is his perfect ride?
That's right.
They still have the resources.
That's right.
Have the nurses in the decaf gone to administration or nursing administration-
They asked for it.
-or they have gone to GSNA?
I can't remember.
Well, I think that, I mean, I personally behind all the way. I was also getting bumper stickers.
We're, we're thinking of getting bumper stickers.
But I see, because we voted in this program, not thinking it through, not being realistic, and everyone's saying, "Whoa, you know, I didn't really mean I wanted to go all the way."
It's funny, it's me.
When we voted the program in, and we talked much about it, we realized it was finally contested.
That's right.
And what they're doing, what somebody else may have to do if they don't win that task.
This isn't a program for poor hospitals or poor health departments or poor nursing homes. It was never developed for the poor places. It was developed for nurses to provide an avenue in which to have, for them to have a party in discussing those things that affect them. It was never designed for an inadequate hospital, or an inadequate nursing home, or an inadequate health department. It was never designed for this.
Let, Mary, Mary, have you quite finished your question? To me, there was one more part I'd like to hear you say.
All right. Which part?
Let me, this implication that, that two opposing things, good administration, I once had collective bargaining, I was up, and I don't see why you couldn't have collective bargaining that would be very successful and productive, you know, well-administered situation.
That's what I'm saying. See, this is what I just said.
I didn't want to break in your mind, Mary.
This was never designed for, for poor places. This was never designed for-
In what way would it have any strength to our witnesses?